Yeah.
All right, before we approve the agenda, we need to uh, motion to excuse uh, Mr. Brown, he has a funeral agenda.
Second.
Second, all those in favor say yes, yes, or say no. Brown's excused. Next up is the approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda for November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three.
And move in second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say yes, yes, opposed say no. And it's approved. Next up is the consent agenda.
I'll with agenda for November twenty eighth, twenty three. I will.
And move in second, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda, say yes, yes, opposed say no. Consent agenda is approved. Next up, this is messages from the mayor, council, and city manager. Let's start with the council.
Hello, this is my first um, official meeting, so thank you for excusing my last one, as well as the upcoming ones that I have to miss. Um, and thanks to everybody who voted for me, I, it's an honor to be in this chair again, and I'm looking forward to serving um, my term. And um, yeah, I um, thank you to everybody that has struggled your walk so far, it makes life a lot easier when you're wandering around. So if you haven't gotten to it yet, get out there. Thank you.
Um, I just like to see all Christmas lights that are open, going already, kind of, I like to see the holiday spirit and things rolling and.
Well, I don't have too much either, but. I was um, you know, I've read through all the materials that was out. I was, I've read a lot of contracts and legal stuff in the past, but boy, the water contract has an awful lot of nitty gritty detail back and forth. Lots of detail in that.
I, I can tell you that the um, project has approved their portion of it, okay? So they've agreed to our terms, which should come out later. C.
Uh, yeah, I would like to request a, an absence on December twelve, I think it is, first meeting in December.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor of C's absence on December twelve, say yes, yes, opposed say no.
Excuse.
Excuse.
Say, all right, well, that's the only thing I have other than that.
Snow makes them look even nicer.
I agree with you.
Two things, one, I've been wanting to mention how um, people seem to see the holiday direct uh, decorations downtown. I, I, I think that they have improved vastly since over the years, and I'm very glad to see that. And I'm excited to go past and see the little um, fire pit on as well, I'm just excited to see that. And also want to thank uh, city um, uh staffers, um Scott, for the tour that we had yesterday. It was long tours, three hours. Uh, we were in uh, city hall, we went to the police department, we looked at um, the firehouse. And um, D P W, and talked to staffers, and learned about what was going on. And even though I was on council for twelve years in the past, and we didn't have this, it was, it was very informative and very useful. And actually, I'd like to make a suggestion that we consider something like that for summer, like a, uh, open house for folks. I, I think people would really like to, to, to have something like that. I, I certainly appreciated it, so thanks Scott for uh, organizing that.
You're welcome.
Last night, I, I got the honor and pleasure to uh, represent the city in acknowledging uh, I think it was two hundred and sixty-five Whitehall students. Having uh, attained a three point three grade average for many of them for multiple years. So it was uh, very encouraging to, to see so many students doing so well. I think that says a lot about our school system, I think they're doing a good job and. It's very honored to do that. Scott, you have anything?
I, I do, you ha, it's, I guess not technically an agenda report, because it's not on the agenda, but you have a report in regards to the Colby Street sewer extension. The uh, the two addresses which uh, encompass four businesses, their septic systems have failed. They are hauling on a regular basis, basically, you know, sewer trucks will come in, pump it out, and take it out to uh, Apple Avenue and dump it. And we've been working on getting an easement, getting the permits, doing the engineering. And at this point, according to the ordinance twenty-two oh five, I'm informing council that I'm doing this as an emergency purchase. Which will take probably about four to six weeks out of the process of advertising, soliciting, reviewing, uh, confirming. We will still go through that process, but primarily, it's the advertising that is what we're skipping. Um, not, not due to the cost to the property owners, but you've got four businesses, uh, very active businesses. That have got failed septic systems, which creates a health issue, obviously. Um, so I'm declaring that as an emergency purchase, it's about six hundred and twenty feet of sewer line. So it's about a thirty thousand dollar expense. And we will continue to keep council informed as we move forward with this project, we're still hopeful we can get it installed uh, fairly soon. Uh, I think we got a little cushion, because the ground's not frozen, and the snow cover is gonna help keep it from freezing for a little bit longer.
Will, will there be any costs to businesses?
Uh, there will be connection fees, um, as is typical with our uh, sewer connections. Uh, we actually got rid of the old archaic residential equivalency units years ago, so it's a flat fee, I think for a commercial business. Now, the connection fee is probably gonna be five to seven thousand dollars. They will also have to pay for running that sewer line from the back of their buil- buildings and connect with our sewer line. Uh, depending on how good their current septic sewer lines are, um, that'll be their cost. We've talked to one of the property owners, and he would like to be included in the bid, so we're gonna add that as an option. We're gonna add the contractor's bid on the sewer main, and then give a price quote for the two laterals to the businesses. Because it's gonna be a lot cheaper with one contractor out there doing all of that versus three different contractors. And it helps a lot to have one person doing everything versus three people connecting the lines, and maybe they didn't think the line was where it was supposed to be.
Is, is uh, River's Ace the nursery there, or is that already connected?
Um, they, they are, um, but we can't, they're connected out on Colby Street, but we can't go any further on Colby Street. But there is that um, sewer main that goes to the south, and that connects to the Evergreen condos, which is located on your map. So they're already connected, um, some of you might remember that not that long ago, we rezoned the south half of that part, so it's a T shape. You can kind of follow the, the darker green lines on the map. Property is T shaped, and um, actually, when it was on, under ownership of Weeces, they had it rezoned, multifamily uh, residential. With the idea that they would, at some point, develop that, I'm not sure how many units they could get in there, but. Um, this extension will also um, increase their options as far as locating things. So they'll be served on two sides, well, down the middle and on the north side as well.
So the green dotted line on Colby, that's water line or?
Um, that's actually uh, really for property line.
Oh.
Yeah, this is the county G I S, they're not gonna show any sewer or um, water lines.
The water lines are, are where are they, they follow the sewer line pretty much?
Um, the water lines, um, I'm not exactly sure where they are, um, I think those are probably in Colby Street. Um, which probably limits, because you need a separation between your water and sewer lines. Um, but I think the water line goes all the way down Colby, and then goes out into the township and services areas in the township as well.
So these businesses already have water?
Yes, they do, yep.
All right, move on to public comment. Anyone liking to make a public comment, please step up and be named.
Good evening, my name is Ifealan, six oh three in Skeen Avenue. I just came along to uh, congratulate the newly elected. And particularly, I like seeing the fact that we have some experienced members. Because I know running the city, there's an awful lot of memory, an awful lot of history, and an awful lot of complication going on, as you noticed when you read some things. And uh, I'm glad to see we still have a new person on there, uh, please look about you and take mentorship from them. These are wonderful people who have learned a lot, and have a lot to share. Thank you all again.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Amy Martel, representing Big John's Pizza at one oh four North Thompson Street. I'm just here today, I wanted to comment on how I've been feeling about what just happened over this past weekend. How the city, and I know you guys aren't directly involved in making the direct decision on what's going on, that the tip of board is. But essentially, you guys are all gonna be held accountable, because this is ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. Purchase agreement is not public knowledge, it should never have been public knowledge. It's been absolutely embarrassing to have all of our personal business put out there on social media. It has affected our business negatively, we have lost business over this holiday weekend. And we're not okay with this, and it's a breach of contract, hope you guys realize that. This should not have been leaked out to the public, there's been no sale on this property. I'm just absolutely just, just, just disgusted, I've been answering phone calls, I've been answering text messages, I've been answering emails. All kinds of things in regards to our business, because so many people in this town, in this, in Skeen County, Oceania County, and the other ones. Because people come from all over the place to come to our place. They think we're closed, they think our business is closed. This is causing us a huge problem, emotionally, financially, and everything else. This whole thing has just been a hot mess, so I want to know what the city's gonna do about it. As I know, is I contacted a lawyer, you guys got emails in your inboxes, if you didn't already see it. I'm just done, and I'm tou- sick and tired of being quiet about everything, and going on about my day like nothing's happening. This city has really, really let us down, we've come along about almost eight years ago and bought this place. And ended up been trying really hard to come alongside and to be a part of the city. We've tried to, you know, grow our business, make it look better, make it more inviting, and everything else for everybody, with no avail. We've just come up against roadblocks time and time and time again, and I don't understand ultimately why. That business has been there, Big John's has been there for fifty-three years, that building's been there since the eighteen hundreds, I don't understand the problem. Because we've added to this community, we brought people into this community, we have people that travel from Spring Lake, Grand Haven, and Hesperia. All the way from the other side of the state, people that live, that have moved out of town, that come here, this is the first place that they come. So I just want people to realize that we are a staple, and everybody is just totally upside down, I'm sure most of you've seen this stuff on social media. But it's also like, I woke up today on Friday morning, um, on M Live and all this stuff on Facebook and everything else. Then I get a text message from my mom, okay, she lives out in Nunica. About the ad in the paper, the Muskegon Chronicle, so all of Muskegon County thinks that we are closed. I'm just, just greatly upset, because this whole process, nobody's reached out to us from the beginning. To say, hey, we're, we're looking to move forward on this stuff that we have in the master plan, or whatever. And say, what can we do to make this work for both of us? I went to the tip of board meetings, I went to a couple of them, I went to them and said, hey, let's work together, can we share this space? Can we just split it up, can we do this, can we do that? No, nothing, nothing. I'm just greatly disappointed, greatly disappointed.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak? All right, then, move on to old business, do we have any old business, Scott?
We do not, Your Honor.
Next up is Resolution twenty-three forty-two, White Lake Fire Authority. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three forty-two, the agreement with uh, for the White Lake Fire. And move in second, is there any discussion?
Um, for, for the benefit of folks here, is Scott able just to give a little thumbnail of, of the, what we're doing here? We're, we, re-upping kind of our agreement?
Um, we, we are, um, the original thirty year um, Articles of Incorporation for the White Lake Fire Authority are due to expire. A committee of their board members um, met and discussed uh, some potential changes. So what's before you tonight is uh, uh, a renewal of that thirty year agreement, basically, for another fifteen years. And it includes the City of Whitehall, Whitehall Township and Fruitland Township.
And, and nothing special to note along with the re-up, re-upending that?
Well, um, there is a change in membership makeup. Uh, currently, it is three members from Fruitland Township, two from the city, and one from Whitehall Township. It will now be three Fruitland, two city, and two Whitehall Township. And there is uh, a basic change in the minimum required number of votes is moving from four to five. Um, and I think, uh, I don't know if, if the mayor or Chief McCarthy would like to add to any of this. Um, but I think those are the two major changes.
Yes, sir. So, Chief, if you'd like to uh, address the council?
Okay, my, just take the question, perfect. Um, yes, uh, and w- welcome to the new members, uh, we did, uh, we had a conversation and did a little presentation a couple of meetings ago. Um, those are the, the two big ticket items, um, they're not the only changes, um, most of them are relatively minor, updated and address. Going from thirty, uh, thirty years to fifteen years, and just kind of wore some, some cleanup of the document, kind of bringing it into twenty twenty-three from nineteen ninety-four. Uh, but those were, those are the two primary changes, um, there was one change that was um, that was proposed, uh, that has been voted down. Um, and that had to do with uh, changing of the signatories. Uh, there was a, uh, an idea on the table to go from the three signatures to having all the members being able to sign. Uh, in the event that we needed those signatories, um, and uh, some other municipalities opted not to go with that. So that was, that's reflected in the most updated copy you have, so that was actually changed uh, from the original, and then changed back to the original language. Um, and that's why the strikeouts are the way that they are. So, a couple of other minor changes, they uh, they opted to uh, elongate the timeframe. That someone who was a member of the authority, uh, as an employee, can serve on the board, uh, post their uh, retirement or dismissal. And uh, also, they uh, spread that out to include some additional family members. Originally, uh, it was mother, mother, father, son, daughter, uh, they included aunts, uncles, and cousins in that. Uh, just to try to make sure that there, if in the event there was a, a separation that was less than pleasant. Uh, that wasn't able to be infiltrated at the board level, to try to make sure there was no conflicts moving forward.
So the vice chair looks like that would change too, that could come from any.
Yes, sir, yeah, the, that, that is correct, in nineteen ninety-four, um, the, the original thirty year document. Had both the chairperson and the vice chairperson both coming from Fruitland. Um, Fruitland uh, conceded the vice chair position, the vice chair can come from anywhere, but they did retain the chair position. And any other questions, clarifications, I'm more than happy to answer them, so.
I would, I would like to, to say that I've talked to a lot of people in the community about this, and there has been some dissatisfaction with the. Five vote uh, requirement to conduct business. Questioning as far as uh, Roberts rules of order, when you have seven people, and four members is a quorum, but. Under this new contract, it's gonna take five people to be able to conduct business. That, that's basically the only dissatisfaction that I've heard about this contract. How, uh, under the thirty year contract that you've had, how is, how have the relationships been between the partners? Has there been dissatisfaction, has there been?
There, uh, the, the last year or so has brought, uh, brought about some, uh, I, I will say conflict, uh, much more than it ever was before. Um, there are some, some differing personalities amongst uh, the, the White Lake Fire Authority Board. Um, it hasn't negatively impacted us moving forward and doing business, serving the community. Um, and really, the sticking points were uh, the document you see in front of you. Um, the, uh, depending on who represented what municipality, they kind of had feelings, of course, about um, giving up seats, or adding additional seats. And kind of how the vote structure was, um, they all had varying reasons as to why they felt that way. Um, but there are, there was some, there was definitely some discord in the process. Uh, this has been going on ten months, uh, I believe, um, uh, getting to the point of where we are now. And um, so it, it has not been sunshine and roses, like a lot of the decisions are at the, at the Fire Authority. Uh, but we were able to come to uh, the Fire Board and, and some of the municipalities that have come to an agreement, that this is a workable document for the, for the foreseeable future, so. Um, and that's uh, it started off with a, with a small committee, which was half of uh, the Fire Board, three members. And uh, one from each municipality sat on that committee, uh, changes were proposed, it went to the attorney, the attorney reflected those changes. To make sure that uh, the wording and what have you was correct for a legal document. Uh, graded a lot of things, but creating legal documents isn't one of them, so we let the, let the bigwigs handle that. Um, and then uh, there was some, some discussion, we moved forward, we made a few more changes. Throughout that process, it then went out to the municipalities. Um, one of the things, it, it uh, it did go to Fruitland a little bit sooner than the Fire Authority Board would have liked. Um, because there was some suggestions and some things that were still um, conversations amongst the board members. And um, that caused a, a little bit of a rift, because there were some assumptions, and Fruitland Township, that we were moving forward with things. When the, the fact was, the majority of the Fire Authority Board members hadn't seen that document yet. So we were able to reel that back in and clarify that, and uh, and then the document ultimately went out to the municipalities. It came back with changes, and uh, those changes are what is reflected in the most current document you have in front of you. Um, at this point, uh, Fruitland Township has uh, made their motions to accept or deny the changes. And um, they have accepted the, the document as you, as you see it in front of you. Uh, we, I spoke with, I had the opportunity to speak with Whitehall Township last night, um, and did a, a question and answer session. Um, uh, Mr. Cole is uh, Whitehall Township representative currently, and uh, so we went over some things last night. And uh, they're digesting, and gonna make their decision uh, in the near future as well. Uh, they opted not to make a decision last night, because we had the opportunity to clarify, and kind of much like we did a few meetings ago, and again tonight, so.
So have these uh, I guess disagreements caused any disruption of service?
Absolutely not, um, the, the disagreements have not caused any disruption of service. Um, if we continue to have disagreements, uh, there will come a point where it will cause a disruption in service. Because if we uh, don't have the article signed um, in the near future, uh, we won't be able to get on the ballot for our millage renewal. Um, and ultimately, not to be too much of a doomsayer, but um, in a year, we don't exist. And that will greatly uh, negatively impact the community. So, um, the, the impact as far as White Lake Fire, um, has been pretty much mine and the boards and the municipalities. Um, the, the staff of the Fire Department and the community have not felt the blunt of any of that, uh, because we have handled it where we're supposed to, so.
Yes.
Um, I was on the Fire Authority a few years before I was, and I really appreciated learning about the Fire Authority and the good work that you do. Um, do you, I mean, what's the attendance been like? I mean, if, if, if that, do you anticipate that five uh, member vote requirement be, being a problem? Based on what you've seen as far as people attended?
No, so we, um, the, the, the three, I, I'll speak for the three years that I've been the chief. Um, I did attend numerous meetings, and back when you were on as well, under the previous administration. The White Lake Fire Authority Board uh, has always um, had pretty, pretty loyal attendance. Um, with it being one meeting a month, it's, it's pretty rare that we're missing anyone. And um, we, we did have one, one member of Fruitland Township, uh, ended up missing quite a few meetings, uh, because of a job change. And when he realized his job wasn't going to change, he went ahead and bowed out, and they, Fruitland Township, uh, within a couple of months, replaced him. And that new member has, has not missed a meeting yet, with, with the exception of one family emergency, but we, uh, we're very well attended, and uh, we're very fortunate for that, so.
Do you have the ability to, to have a special meeting in the event that you have business to conduct, and you don't have the ability to make decisions?
Yes, ma'am, yep, um, as, as long as we follow the standard Roberts rules of, of notification, uh, public notification, we, we can do that same as the city council.
Is there anyone else that wants questions?
I just have one minor thing related to the, um, on the last page of this packet, where it's on certification for Whitehall Township. If you read that sentence, it says Whitehall, uh, City of Whitehall.
Um, oh, yes. The very last page, referring, where Whitehall Township signs, it actually says City of Whitehall, you know, first sentence of the body.
Right, perfect, and uh, we'll get that corrected, um, obviously, thank you, sir, um, obviously, some of the, those names are out of date as well. Um, as we're going through this process, not knowing ultimately who is going to be where, we opted not to change those. Um, because it's plug and play, but I'll make sure that we get that updated before the, before the final copy gets signed by the municipalities.
I gotta ask you, what's the likelihood of these uh, disagreements? Being resolved?
As far as, as far as the disagreements regarding the articles?
Right.
Um, the, the, the re- the resolution, if, if the municipalities are happy with the way the articles are now, the resolution would solve that. Um, one, one thing I do want uh, everyone to understand, and I, I told Whitehall Township this last night as well. Um, the Articles of Incorporation are designed to, they're our document for fifteen years, if we don't want to do anything with them. Um, if there ends up uh, one month, six months, five years, ten years from now, um, they can be amended or restated at any time. So anything that we, that the municipality agrees to at this point moving forward, if there is a change. Uh, in what the, even an individual in this municipality wants to see, or they want to see some things updated. Um, we can reconvene and have those discussions, and we can, the only, the only negative impact to restating our articles. Um, is there's a fee associated with publishing them. Um, but other than that, there's no downside of having those discussions, and going back and looking and reviewing them and going, okay, well. This worked for us last year, it's continuing to work for us, so we need to look to update and make changes. So while it is a fifteen year document, um, that doesn't mean it cannot be altered if the municipalities see fit.
One of the reasons we went to the fifteen versus the thirty, we initially had looked at the thirty again. Uh, the reason we looked at the fifteen now is because life is moving so quick right now, we don't know what the area's gonna look like in fifteen years. And we might be behind the eight ball somehow, and we don't want to be there, so that's why we, we cut that back to fifteen from thirty. And uh, just to make sure that we keep our ducks in the row.
That was a, and that was a board member, uh, the board member suggested that to me, and I, I thought that was a great idea. Because uh, with our thirty year millage, it's no secret that, um, you know, we currently have two villages, we have a separate millage to replace our fire station. Um, we weren't able to do that with operating funds, because we had grown, and so uh, the whole idea is being able to look at the reset. And, and be able to change, and if we can forecast things at the thirteen year mark, we can make an adjustment in two years, not in seventeen years. So I thought that was a, a very good idea, uh, from the Fire Authority Board members to do that. Now, it also means that I'll have to do one more Articles before I retire, where in the thirty year, this would have been my last, but I'm willing to do that as my swan song when I hang on my helmet, so.
So this is, this is a, a living document that is able to be modified at, at the, the will of the partnership?
Absolutely, and if, uh, and, and that's what happened in two thousand thirteen, the, the board had some, some different ideas, and they went back and they did an amended and restated. And the two thousand thirteen was what we actually worked from, because that's been the document for the last decade. From ninety-four to two thousand thirteen, it stayed the same, um, and there were, there were relatively minor changes in the thirteen. Um, but uh, but yes, that's. But, but yes, that's a, like I said, it's a living document. And as we grow and change that document, we're the same to make sure it, it always aligns with not only what the municipalities want, but what the Fire Board needs, what the community needs.
All right. Thank you, G.
Absolutely.
Thank you for the excellent job that the Fire Authority does for this community.
My, my firefighters made me look like a rock star. They're amazing.
Do you want to remind her?
Okay.
All right. With that, there's no further discussion on this matter. Roll call, please.
Okay. Holmstrom?
Yes.
Hillebrand?
Yes.
Cavalla?
Yes.
Sigingo?
Yeah.
Zimer?
Yes.
And Salter?
Yes. Resolution twenty-three forty-two is approved. Next is resolution twenty-three forty-two, Township Water Service Agreement.
If, if I may, real quick, Mayor, jump the gun a little bit. It is, it is going to be a twenty, or a fifteen-year agreement. The resolution says twenty-five and the third whereas. I, I guess that's a problem of bringing up old resolutions and typing over and missing something. The body of the document is fifteen years, and further down, it does refer to the fifteen-year, but there's that third whereas.
So everyone recognizes that we approved the fifteen-year agreement? So we're back to water, water service agreement.
Oh, move that. We approve resolution twenty-three forty-three Township Water Service Agreement.
Second. It's been moved in seconds. Any discussion?
I have a few questions.
Sure. Scott can answer that.
Now, to be clear, so is this not, this is more than the commercial folks that we've been supplying? This is residential as well?
Correct. Just to give you a real quick rundown of the substantive changes, we are going to a fifteen-year agreement, which you've just heard a really good explanation why fifteen years is probably better than twenty-five or thirty. We've expanded the service area. We initially talked about expanding it because of the Silver Creek pollution issue. And when we looked at it, there's not much of the township that's left after we serviced the Kobe Street Corridor, Walmart, and then north. So the negotiations was, let's just service the entire township if it comes to that. I mean, that would still be up to the township to expand as well as the property owners desire to have municipal water. We also changed the, there, there was supposed to be a committee that met every year, and the practice has been where Brian sits down with the super, Public Works Director Brian Armstrong, sits down with the Township Supervisor and just goes over, you know, what happened over the last year, new connections, where our flows are at. So we changed that so that standard operating practice was in the contract versus technically doing something, or not doing something we're required to. Another change is the elimination of the hydrant fee. That is not a significant source of revenue. That's just an old archaic process. The city got rid of the internal transfer for payment of hydrant maintenance fees. It's just part of our annual water system maintenance expense. So that's about it as far as the, well, we also put in there that the city will be the exclusive provider of water during the term of the prior contract. I don't know if it was a desire to go somewhere else, seek cheap, seek cheaper water, which is apparently hard to say for me tonight. And they actually approached the Northside Water System, who have also approached the City of Whitehall about getting water from them. So we wanted to make sure that we are the exclusive provider because if we're investing a lot of infrastructure to provide water, township goes somewhere else, then we've kind of not recouped our expense. And that's, that's about it as far as the substantive. So yes, the, the, that's a long answer to say, yes, we're going to cover the entire township if the need arises.
I have a follow-up. I, when I was on council, I remember when we put our water fees up and I wanted to really make sure, you'll probably remember, I pressed you to make sure they were warranted.
Mm-hmm.
Just because, you know, water is something people have to have, is people's basic need. But is, is this, is this going to raise our rates or is it going to, how, how do we account for this in our, our water fund to make sure that we don't have to raise our rates? I, I don't mind helping our neighbors, but I certainly want to keep our water rates reasonable.
There is, there will be no effect to our local rates as far as this agreement or any expansion. The townships responsible for paying for the infrastructure, we take over the, the future maintenance and replacement of that. But then again, that starts all, you know, with the additional customers, that brings in additional revenue. So that as, you know, thirty, forty years from now, when we're replacing water mains out in the township, we'll have the adequate revenue.
So the maintenance costs are not going to hit us?
No, not at all. Not at all. You know, the, because it's all relatively new, everything that's been put out in the township. And typically, you'll get thirty, forty, maybe fifty years worth of life out of a, out of a pipe.
So no, no raise to our water rates, right?
As
I know.
As a result of this agreement.
I know.
In February, you might hear us ask for an increase because of the entire system. But it's not an increase due to any water service out in the township. It's just overall cost of doing business. Plus, we did increase some. We've been bumping it up a little bit higher than we anticipated because of the lead and copper rules. We're required to pay all those costs up to eighteen inches inside of residences. And we've been doing that with any new services, any amended, or not amended, improved services, like we did on Mir's Avenue. We replaced all the laterals. And I think we're also doing fifteen to twenty a year because we're under a state order, everybody is under a state order to replace them all in twenty years. So we've been pretty aggressive on that.
But, but coming, coming, we have a, a rate increase?
Um.
Which you'll probably address with the?
With, with next year's budget. Well, one, one thing that a lot of communities do is they, you know, they, they try and hold the water rates for a lot of reasons you're saying, and sewer rates, try and hold them down. And eventually, communities, I know building a few years back increased water rates by twenty-five percent because they hadn't raised them in ten years. And there's a whole new council at the next election. What, what we're trying to do is the incremental to stay in pace with inflation and additional costs. I think we've been anywhere from two to five percent. Actually, I think we went ten because of the new state rule.
I just, I just know that that's something that people have to have.
Yep.
Not only for, you know, drinking water, but for, you know, their basic needs and all that.
And I do believe, and I do believe that we are still, I don't know about Fruitport, but we're either the che, the cheapest, the most affordable water rates in the county, if not the second. Because I know between City of Whitehall and Fruitland Township, there was, or Fruitport Township, we were always neck and neck. You know, a lot of people say, well, this is the cost of our water. But then you add in debt and you add in readiness to serve. We look at the total cost of the customer, and we're still probably the most affordable, if not the second most affordable in the county. So we do, we do take that into account and try and, you know, squeeze expenses before we increase revenues.
So this is a fifteen-year agreement, you said?
Yep, fifteen years.
So it says twenty-five years.
Yeah, and that third, the, the current one is twenty-five years.
And down below that, it's a good one, it's like a, the third whereas.
Yeah, that, that's the one that should be fifteen.
Okay. Fifteen-year agreement.
Yes.
Yes. On page five, the last paragraph under restrictions concerning water consumption, there's a limit of three hundred thirteen thousand gallons a day, but there's like a, a, a last few words there. Two hundred eighty-two thousand is a point of concern where they want to start negotiations. So where are we at now? What kind of number do we have now? And do you have a big projection of where that two hundred eighty-two thousand might come in?
Um, I can give you, I believe we're only at about thirty thousand gallons per day right now. We are way above the three thirteen. You know, a, a lot of the water usage, even as we expand to residential, there, there's no processing type use of water. It's, you know, bathrooms at, you know, Big B's and McDonald's and, and the homes. So that's not a huge consumption of water. So I think we're at about thirty thousand.
It's not likely to come up?
Probably not. Correct. And this will be the last one I have to negotiate. So I got you beat. He's not that much younger than I am.
All right. Any further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Hillebrand?
Yes.
Sigingo?
Yes.
Cavalla?
Yes.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Zimer?
Yes.
Salter?
Yes. Resolution twenty-three forty-three is approved. Next up is public road request.
So I guess I'll make a motion to consider this.
Okay. We have a second?
Yeah.
A second.
A second. Discussion.
I would like to know if there's any added cost to the city or to, we have to maintain the road now, right? Do we allow it? Do we allow it in there already anyway?
We, we have not. And we have often gotten calls from the residents during the winter because currently, you know, until you take action tonight, it's a private road. It's always been privately maintained as far as snow plowing. When they came in with the development, they, I think they built maybe two houses and put in the top, not, not the top, the base coat of asphalt. And then they thought they were going to build more houses, so they held off on putting in the asphalt. And I think it's been close to fifteen years. But I think just about every lot is now built on. And Archimedes, with Jackson Murky, the letter from Gary Murky, went in and did the top coat late summer. And we did have Brian Armstrong and our engineers verify that they were doing it to our specs. And of course, Jackson Murky, they do a ton of construction in the county and West Michigan. So we know that, you know, they're going to do a good job as well. So yes, all future maintenance, again, it's a brand-new road, and it's a very lightly-used cul-de-sac. I think there's a dozen homes in there, so it's going to have a huge shelf life. Asphalt typically is a twenty-year fix, so this is probably going to have thirty. Maintenance will be minimal. Snow plowing will be our biggest cost. But we will also add this street to our local street Act Fifty-One map. And we actually received money from the State of Michigan for major and local streets that are certified by the state. So it'll be a cost to maintain primarily snow plowing, but we will get additional revenue from the State of Michigan.
How much revenue is that likely to be?
Um, local streets is always not as much as we would like. Major streets, for some reason, we always have an abundance and we're allowed to transfer money between major and local. The actual dollar amount, I don't know offhand. But we, I can take a look at that and see, because we, we certify the Act Fifty-One maps every year. So I can take a look and give you a pretty good estimate as to what additional revenue would be brought in on that.
Yes.
I, I doubt it's possible now. And I haven't been down there just on the street for me. But would we be able to look at as we, if we do start adopting, you know, public roads, maybe having a, a standard of like bike paths or to add to our walkability? I've got my grandsons, and when they come, I know where I can go, where I can bike with them safely. And you, you can't do it if you don't have a bike path. I mean, I don't take them on those roads. If I don't have a bike path, it's not safe, especially with distracted driving. So if we could look at adding something like a bike path?
Yep.
That'd be great.
Certainly.
And then the, then the rest of the roads too, if that'll be?
Yes.
All right. Do we need a roll call on this?
I don't think so.
Uh, probably. We're accepting property.
Do we?
Yeah, except properties.
Not bad. You ready for it?
Is there any further discussion? All right, and roll call, please.
Okay. Sigingo?
Yes.
Hillebrand?
Yes.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Zimer?
Yes.
Cavalla?
Yes.
And Salter?
Yes. And now I have a new road, or I have a list after this, newly published. Uh, next is public comment. This is where students will come up and introduce themselves to the council. What's your name, your teacher, and your high school?
Hi, Matt Eleven, from Mr. Johnson's Seventh Hall of Lonnville High School.
Thank you. You'll sign your sheet after the meeting. Is there any further public comment? Yes, sir.
Pete McCarthy, thirteen hundred Delaney. I didn't want to be out of order and shout thank you from the peanut gallery after I sat down. So appreciate the support, not only with the Articles of Corporation, but the City of Whitehall has historically been a huge supporter of ours, and we greatly appreciate that. So thank you again.
Anyone else have anything you want to say? We adjourn.